I went to school in most of them.
If they just flipped, it's all beyond Tuesdays. If, if, and I don't, I, I wouldn't mind joining recreation, just letting everyone know. Just because people are changing boards and everything. Recreation?
If we.
If we put, if Kevin went to recreation, if you two just flipped, you'd keep Tuesdays, right?
Oh, you'd both keep Tuesdays?
Yeah, there are different Tuesdays. Yeah, well, so rec is tomorrow and planning is what, next?
Wait.
Tuesday?
I'm just saying, that's another alternative, because if not, I pick up more meetings, because I'm on, and I don't mind that, but I'm just saying, I'm on economic development, SIP, NRPC.
I don't care.
And now I have.
Sit on rec?
Recreation.
What do you do?
Everything.
I know, I don't sit on rec no more.
Yeah, we could, we could.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's a simple flip.
That's as easy as it gets, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, because I don't play sports, it's even better.
Yep. Could drive the track.
But it would have been fun.
You'd have to get an experience with it.
If you want, but again.
That's fine.
I think that's, that's a good idea.
So, you're gonna go to planning?
No, they're gonna flip.
I'm gonna go to planning.
He's going to planning, Kevin's going to rec.
They're just gonna flip flop their sign.
Just flip the Tuesdays.
Steve will keep heritage.
I thought we'd already done that, that's, I thought Kevin went to rec, no, Kevin went someplace, didn't go anywhere.
He didn't go anywhere.
You went to planning.
He gave it to me.
I took the best step, now I got worked ahead of him.
I got extra meetings out of that.
Okay. So, so now Kevin, Kevin will go to rec, and Steve will go to planning.
Yeah.
And Kim will keep everything she has.
Okay. It's, um, Tuesday after BO S meeting, so it's easy.
Yep, so, so you'll stay with heritage?
Yeah, I'll stay with heritage and I'll do planning, Kevin could do, um, rec tomorrow at seven P M.
Okay. So, we'll make that note, send it off to Kim for. Karen's taking notes over there.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you, Karen. It's a lot to keep us straight, isn't it?
It's a full-time job.
Right? I like the heritage.
You like the old? I'd love that too, if you want.
I know, I know. I would take a minute and thank Kevin for agreeing to become the interim building inspector, I know it's a job you do love, and, um, I think it was nice. I knew it, I've only done it for forty-plus years. Thank you to your wife for letting you do it, although she might probably want you out of the house. We'll, we'll get a basket later. And Steve, thanks for being able to take that, the planning. Not a problem. All right, making it work, so. My wife is happy, I don't know. All right. Up next, we have the acceptance of a donation to the Recreation Revolving Fund Events earmarked Spirit of Litchfield in the amount of three thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the fireworks display, and this all happened last Saturday.
Yep.
Great job by everybody, raising this kind of money in about twenty-four hours, I think it was, is what I was told. Yeah?
Yep.
Is that what you heard? Yeah. So, and everyone who donated, thank you, and get a list.
So, how about we'll second, uh, I'll make the motion to accept the donation of thirty-six hundred and ten dollars for this Litchfield Recreation Revolving account for Spirit of Litchfield?
Earmarked for the Spirit of Litchfield.
Earmarked.
Yep, yep.
We need someone to second it?
I'll second it, how's that?
Um, so, they had seventy donation, donors ranging from ten dollars to two hundred, seventeen companies donated, big donors of Tim's Turf, Optimum Building, Gil Behringer, Deb Hogan Camp, All Pro Moving and Storage, Chick Farm Woodworking and Gift Shops, Smokin' Spanx, Edwards Auto Repair, Creator Ceilings, the Martel Family, Jim Cardello, Brian Ford, Pro Scapes, Tony Rosa, A.J. Sports Bar and Grill, People's Photography, Faro, Farolito Electric, Eye Roof, Mike's Equipment, and.
Hey, buddy.
Bill Moran.
Yep.
Quite the amount.
Great job, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We got a good town here.
So, we gotta.
Yes. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Up next, we have approval of abatement of taxes for eighty-six hundred and fifty-three dollars for tax-deeded property Twenty Lock Mill Drive. This is usually where I say Kim. So, can I say Karen? Did you show us some on this?
Yeah, so the deeding of this property happened on April twenty-second, and our tax year is April one through March thirtieth. So, everything has to stay the same as is, so we couldn't make it exempt under the town of Litchfield until after the second issue tax bill for next year. So, we have to now abate that property, because nobody's gonna pay that bill. Because it's our property.
It's our property.
It's a town property.
It's a town's property.
We got the deed to that now, right?
We have, oh yeah, we got the deed, um, in April, yeah.
Good, and the lights are still on.
I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, getting into details. Another topic for another day.
Yep.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement for map fourteen lot thirty-nine, Twenty Lock Mill Drive in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Brunel, second for Ms. Clune.
I'm trying to get one in.
Yep. Any discussion on this?
You're correct.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. You know what, it is six forty-five P M, why don't we open the floor up for public input? Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and speak?
I'll say something.
Hey, welcome.
Oh, he's got a list.
Yeah.
Corey Flint, one-two-three Hillcrest Road. Uh, today, I wanted to come and, and ask for your consideration on making a possible change to the sign ordinance here in Litchfield. And the change I want to make is, the signs, all signs are prohibited, temporary signs are so forth on Albuquerque Avenue. It didn't, uh, in the last several years, it's been enforced pretty heavily, and I think that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure why the signs were prohibited on Albuquerque, what, what, what led, led to that, but, you know, I think it's led to some unintended consequences, for instance, uh, you know, the, uh, school usually puts out the graduating senior signs in front of the town hall here, which are not legal to be put out there. Uh, information signs, like the Fourth of July Parade, the Fishing Derby, the, uh, Car Show, and so forth, um, you know, are usually get pulled, or, you know, they don't, are not, not getting out now, which, uh, you know, help the public to, uh, you know, know of these events. It's my understanding that it takes a warrant article to, uh, to change something like that. And, uh, what I, what I'm asking you to look at, to consider, is maybe a amendment to non-political, non-business signs, temporary non-political, non-business signs, um, being allowed to be on, uh, the Albuquerque frontage for, you know, two weeks or thirty days or so.
It's an event, like, going on. They used to allow event signs to be put up. They used to put them up here, along here, because they weren't zoning in per se, in my opinion, they weren't zoning unless they changed it since I've been gone. Okay, but we used to allow the schools or a special event for a town event or something like that, that was involved, and those signs went up. They used to allow them at one time, I don't know why they stopped it, but I wasn't here, so. I'll look into that, zoning wise, I can do that. Yeah, can we look into when this was?
We, we, there was a warrant that passed, I believe, or some kind of, I'm looking for the ordinance now to find out the history.
Yeah, I didn't see an amendment on the, on the law, when it was changed, but.
You think there's a warrant, Josh?
I think it was a warrant that came forward, but I'm looking for the ordinance now, but.
Okay.
I mean, historically, signs were allowed, and it wasn't until recently that it got enforced.
About three years ago, yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
I don't run with that.
I mean, the school, obviously, the high school kids, the graduate, they've been still allowed to go up, and they've been there times, they were there this past year or two.
They were, but, you know, I mean, is, is that select enforcement? Because if we put up a, a Fourth of July sign, it's pulled right away.
I, I thought Kim Klein, we can check what they said, there was some agreement with the school that they could do that.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure about Fishing Derby and, and the rest.
The Fishing Derby signs were pulled this year, they were, they were wondering where all their signs went.
So, I guess, see, I wanna think, I think, I believe the ordinance started from the planning board, so we have to make, we, we as a board can make a motion, request that it be reviewed and changed by the planning board.
You got it.
And unfortunately, I think our town administrator is watching us right now.
Oh, yeah.
So, you're all clear.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't know if you could request them to do it, but definitely do an inquiry on it, um, because I thought Albuquerque had some rules with it, that from the center line on the bike path side, seventy-five feet over, you couldn't do anything, but from outside, twen- fifty feet over, you could, there was something along that, a road agent would know as well.
Yeah.
Those rules pretty well. But definitely do an inquiry to find out.
Because we used to allow it up on Hillcrest, right here at the entrance.
Yeah, we, I mean, there have been.
Yeah.
Times allowed it, so if the ordinance is there and we have to enforce it, we have to.
Three years ago.
I will know what the change was, okay?
I'll look into that. Let us try to find out something for you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Corey. Now, that light bulb on that tree.
Yeah, I'll take care of that right away.
Okay, uh, can I hook up my laptop?
Can you hook up your laptop? I need an I T guy.
Um, we.
Yeah, one second.
Um, I don't have one with, but I do have a hookup, I hope.
What are you looking for, remote?
Nope.
I, I'm sorry, I think visuals will help with this.
Okay, tell us who you are first.
Oh, sorry, so, um, my name is Diana Lovash, I live at thirteen Pearson Street.
Hi.
Um.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna drag this meeting out, I think it's been moving along very quickly. I'd like to, um, bring up. Sorry about bringing this up. I'd like to discuss the location of the stop sign at the corner of Albuquerque and Century. There's, have been two major accidents, one in, um, September sixteenth and one in October twenty-something. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention, and I, I'm sure you're all aware of it, is, um, I live in the area, there have been multiple accidents there as, as recently as the two mentioned, I believe the Jaws of Life was taken, used to take one a few years ago, not recently, but. And I've personally have had cars cut in front of me. I don't think it's anyone's fault, I really think, um, it's the location of the stop sign. So, this is the, this is, um, approximately four hundred feet, I'm driving westbound on, um, Century, headed towards Albuquerque, I'm about four hundred feet away. You can't see us, there's no stop sign, you can't see anything. Here, I'm about two hundred feet away, no stop sign is visible. You, you can't even see Albuquerque, which is kind of a major, and I think everyone needs to drive it, because pictures don't show the true impact. This, I'm a hundred and fifty feet, and if I zoom, oh, shoot, can I zoom? You, you, you can, can you, I don't even know if you, oops. Can you see?
The bushes on the right side are blocking the sign.
And that's a hundred and fifty feet.
I know where it is.
Um, let's see if, now I can't zoom back down. So, my, um, the next picture for, um, for, this is a hundred feet from, okay, all my distances are approximate, I use a map, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so, this is a hundred feet, and you finally see it. According to, like, you know, if you Google, how many feet does it take for a car going thirty miles an hour to stop? You get an answer between eighty and a hundred and twenty, based on braking and noticing the stop sign and everything like that. I just think moving the bushes is not the answer to this question. The next, so, I have now, I walk and ride in this area all the time, so I, I see, I am across the street, you can't even see where the stop sign is.
So, that's only.
Right there is, do you see how far?
It's farther from the intersection, it's gonna be this way.
Yeah, because the road flares all like this to make it easier to turn.
Every four-way does that, too.
Yep.
You know, I feel that stop sign is more located on Albuquerque than it is on Century, and if you just slide it back to the, I'm gonna call it the beginning of the curve, but really, you, you really need to.
Stop ahead.
Just be, there, there are service, there's service contractors, oil delivery, all kinds of Amazon FedEx. There are people that are going up and down that street all the time, that may not be familiar with that neighborhood. I, I never really noticed that the sign was obstructed, because I know to stop, but someone who's delivering or visiting or something, if we could just move that sign to a more, just move it. You can see in line where, um, all the mailboxes are, it won't impact plowing, road maintenance. I, you know, I think it's, it's a major safety issue. Um, I know someone personally who was in the accident on the, in October. You know, they drive this road all the time, and it, it really, it's a health, at this point, I feel the, the town can get sued next time, and it's gonna be negligence, and it could be fatal next time. I, I mean, you're supposed to only be going thirty, thirty, I think, on the side road, people are going thirty-five or forty, they think it's a straightaway. People on Albuquerque are supposed to be going thirty-five, but you know they're going forty-five, so it's high speed, well, not high-high, it's not highway speed, but it's good, so I, I would just, so my, I would like to suggest if we could at least move the sign, don't even deal with the bushes, I think the bushes, you, you know, I don't know, I.
I was looking at that last week, because I received a call on it, too. And I talked to Ca- to Kevin, and he's aware of it right now, he's got rules that he has to follow, but there's other ways of making it work, and like a stop ahead, a sign, or something like that.
You need another sign, you just don't need another, let's not waste the time purchasing another, we don't need a blinking sign, we don't need two signs to tell you.
Isn't, isn't there a sign position by statute, wherever the bar is, that's where the sign has to be?
Well, that's what happens when you get in the bars, okay, but you can stop farther back or slower, like a warning.
Sure, you can stop farther back, now you're creeping forward.
Correct, but the bar is longer than the right of, the width of the right of way.
No, I understand that, it's because the way the road was flared out.
So, here's a four-way.
Yep.
And, you know, it, it's, it's, you know, the bar is there, and there's a mult, I shouldn't say multiple, there's at least one location on Albuquerque where there are two stop signs, because there's a crosswalk.
Yep.
But you can move that stop line so it's back, I, I don't know how you, on, on Century, you know, more. I would just like, you know, I, I just think it, it's a real driving issue, and if you haven't driven on it, you should really drive down Britain, turn down Century, and just.
It's actually a topic we discussed here.
A long ago, a month ago.
Maybe, yeah, maybe a month ago.
There was a major accident.
Well, that's, that's right around the time, and at the time, Cap- Captain Tess here, as well as, uh, the chief were sitting here with us. Captain, do you remember the, the accident that happened, were they heading west, were they coming?
What ended up happening with that accident is a gentleman was heading down Century.
South, oh, Century.
Heading down Century and had run through the stop sign, and the individual who was traveling on Albuquerque impacted them.
Yeah, were they coming this way, or were they coming?
They were heading towards the river.
Okay, so, west, so it would have been the same scenario, yeah. I know there's a stop sign there, so I really never noticed where it.
Right, because you know to stop, you're familiar with the area, you know it's, you know, you're, you're just familiar with it.
If, if, if I could add, it still does, the average vehicle, it takes one point, it's, your speed times one point four six six, so at thirty miles per hour, takes about forty-four feet per second. And the average human reaction time is two and a half seconds, so you're al- already traveling a hundred feet just from when you see it to when you decide to hit the brake. So, you haven't even hit the brake, when, once you saw the sign, you haven't even hit the brake before you run through it.
Yep.
And, and I know there's rules and regulations, but like, all our amendments and all our warrants, they need to be modified, we just voted on something this last election to change the year, or, you know, so yes, there, this may be in guide, you know, but it's not.
Safety first.
It still needs to be addressed or something, so I'd just like to bring that.
I, I personally would also like to see a stop sign go back on the other side of Century where Pearson crosses, because that's, you both lived on that side, so you understand, that's a, that's a risk when you go through that intersection.
Used to be a four-way stop the one time that I recall.
Board members, could I, would this be a question for a road engineer?
See, I, and I don't know, I'm just bringing it to your attention, and that was my next question, how does this get addressed, and how do we move forward, and what happens?
It's my understanding the board of selectmen can decide where stop signs are.
Yep.
But we have to approve them.
Yeah, but again, I'll just reiterate, and again, Mr. Charabino said if, you just can't just pick up a sign and move it, because there's engineers that know and the law of where these things go. So, I would consult a traffic engineer and the road agent, because then we're liable if we do something and put it in the wrong place.
I think I would, I would just defer to Kevin Brown, have him take a no look at repositioning that sign.
Okay, it's been, is, it's been addressed to him with no response, and it's been about three, four weeks now. So, I don't know if he just doesn't, I, I don't know, how.
We can, we can.
How, how did you address it with him, I guess, did you send him an email?
My husband did.
Okay.
I was there, I looked, looked at it, and when you drive up to it, coming off Century on the Albuquerque, you got, it, the way the sign is placed on the other end of the white line, it's about twenty-five feet from the edge of the, the right of way coming out, and when you're looking, you can't see it when you're coming to Albuquerque, because of the bushes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there, and it's behind it, as you can see, it's way behind.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's not in the town right of way either, right, the bushes.
The bushes are on the guy's land.
Yeah.
Okay? But we can move the stop sign farther down, and the, the white line is a subject matter, okay?
So, so that white line, the next street over, I think, is Bristol, and they have an angled stop line. So, I mean, the, this line, I don't know if it necessarily has to be a straight line, and, and throughout the development, not every single stop sign is by the stop line, I, I've taken a survey, walking around and stuff, but, you know, some stop signs are in front of the stop line, so.
Let, let us read up, reach out to the road agent.
Yep.
All right, and we'll.
We'll get back.
Let's figure out what we can, what we can do on this.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure we stay within the laws.
Absolutely.
Kim says it might be a road engineer that needs to be, um, consulted, so let us figure it out from our end.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted, you know, eventually, the, the accident is gonna be much more severe.
Something does need to happen, though, something needs to.
I agree.
So, please, please drive by and see for yourself, I think that's the, pictures don't do anything. Well, they do.
Well, they're worth a thousand words.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Are there any more members of the public that want to come up? Do you want to come up for public input? No? All right, hearing none, we will close public input at seven oh three P M. All right, and up next, we have twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five of Harker Peddler license for Jill Belbin, D B A Ice Cream Emergency, address Salem, New Hampshire. Background check and state, state food license have been verified, internally approved for a December seventh Litchfield event, which was Spirit of Litchfield. Do we have anything on this? I don't think we do. Does anybody have any?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five Harker Peddler license for Jill Belbin, D B A Ice Cream Emergency out of Salem, New Hampshire.
Motion for Mr. Gannon.
Second.
Second for Mr. Brunel. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Up next, we have the warrant article draft discussion, two thousand twenty-five budget updates. Is this your, is this your cup of tea?
No.
Hey, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Can I borrow you for a second over here?
Oh, boy. Kevin doesn't remember when it was born, or?
We have a couple of things where.
What happened?
November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, Budget Committee motion passed for twenty-five thousand dollar cut to the police overtime. Approved nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, small increase to the library and the budget, now, as I understand it, is at eight million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. It is forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars under the cap, and the default budget is eight million one hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Is everybody pretty much up to speed where we're at on this?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
And then we have, we should go through the warrant articles.
Yeah, I think the captain's here for the warrant articles, too.
Oh, is that what he's?
I think he's here to talk about the, the station, right?
I was to ask, are we here for questions, concerns?
Yeah, I think, I think the last one, we asked for details and stuff like that, so. The only thing I was gonna say about the budget is, we really have to, we really have to get out and, what? I don't use the word educate, but educate the public on what a default will do this town if it, if the current budget request is in power. I mean, it's a significant, um, reduction, and it would be impactful, unfortunately, but I think if people have been following along, they know that the budget was cut severely in certain departments, and we're trying to re-level it back to things the voters already approved for, that were taken out last year. If we put them back in, and that's causing the cap issue, so. We'll figure it out, I guess.
I mean, I've, and I've mentioned this at Budget Committee hearings, is that, you know, we don't have fluff in our budget, there's really no fluff in this budget. Um, it is last year's budget with the approvals from the, the voters.
That's it.
Couple of tax, a couple of warrants.
Yep.
And the normal, um, like, increases in personnel pay, you know, compensation. But there's really not, we're not asking for anything fancy, we're not, we're not, it's a bare-bones budget, and hopefully, the, the taxpayers see that and give us a support, because, I mean, it is, we're not, we're not asking for a lot. Well, we'll go through all the, all the warrants real quick. I'll, I'll just read the whole thing. To the inhabitants of the town of Litchfield and the county of Hillsborough, in said state, New Hampshire, qualified to vote in Town Affairs, you are hereby notified that the first session of the annual meeting of the town of Litchfield will be held at Campbell High School, One Highlander Court in said Litchfield on February first or eighth, two thousand twenty-five at ten A M. For the explanation, discussion, and debate of each warrant article. Warrant articles may be amended at the session per RSA. I have no idea what that is, symbol is, so I'm gonna go with forty, semicolon, thirteen, comma, four, period. You are hereby notified that the second session of the annual meeting of the town of Litchfield will be held at Campbell High School, One Highlander Court in said Litchfield on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at seven o'clock in the forenoon, for the choice of town officers elected by official ballot to vote on questions required by laws to be inserted in the official ballot, and to vote on all warrant articles from the first session on the official ballot per RSA, whatever that symbol is, forty, semicolon, thirteen, comma, eight. The polls for the election of town officers and other action required to be inserted on said ballot will be open on said date from seven o'clock in the forenoon, and will not close earlier than seven o'clock in the evening.
I think that symbol is Prince's symbol.
It's just there. The artist formerly known?
Yes.
It's gotta be something to do with the RSA.
Yeah.
I've never seen that before. Two S's, it means nothing. Um, Article One, Election of Officers, we have selectmen, two positions, three-year terms. Budget Committee, two positions, three-year terms. Budget Committee, one position for a one-year term. Uh, Cemetery Trustee, one position for a three-year term, Library Trustee, two position for a three-year term, and Trustee of Trust Funds, one position for a three-year term. Signups to January twenty-second to January thirty-first. Then we have Zoning Amendment Number One.
I think those are all placeholder.
Yeah. And Place, Number Two and Number Three, okay, and when we know what they are, we can, you know. Report them in, Dan. So, up next is the Operating Budget, shall the town vote to raise an appropriate? Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amounts set forth in the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling eight million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be eight million, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. There's actually a period there where it should be a comma between one sixty and one fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town of Litchfield or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty, semicolon, thirteen, comma, ten, and sixteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Majority vote required. Estimated two thousand and twenty-five tax rate impact is seventeen cents. All right? Article six is human services and health agencies. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to support human services and health agencies providing services to the town of Litchfield? Majority vote required. Estimated two thousand twenty-five tax rate impact, zero point zero two cents. Article seven is ambulance revolving fund. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be placed in the ambulance revolving fund? This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised from new taxation. Majority vote required. Estimated two thousand twenty-five tax rate impact, zero point zero zero cents. Property reevaluation, a revaluation expendable trust fund. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in the property revaluation expendable trust fund as previously established? This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised from new taxation. Required, majority vote required. Estimated tax rate impact, zero. It's going pretty good so far. Article nine, new police department building. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for the purpose of constructing and equipping a new police department building and to authorize the issuance of not more than five million, five hundred and ninety?
Yeah. I think that five.
That's a typo.
Yeah, that five shouldn't be there.
What shouldn't be there?
I think the second five.
Not more than five million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. You're trying to trip me up, right?
Not me.
Of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three, and to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other item, other terms thereof, and to authorize the selectmen to take any other action relative thereto. Three-fifths ballot vote required. And we don't have a tax rate impact for that one yet, because they don't have a bond yet.
Well, there'd be no, no, no tax the first year.
The first year. Bond wouldn't start at twenty twenty.
It would start the ne, the following year, okay. First bond payment, so we should try to figure out what that is and put it in there for the people. But we can discuss them, we'll discuss them all after.
I suspect you only can put it in the voters guide, you won't be able to put it on the actual.
Right now, you can't. We've got to wait to see what the numbers are going to be.
Article ten.
Bob, before we go on, I mean, the captain's here, do we? I think he's here to simply answer questions around the, the police station.
Yes, if there were questions, I would be happy to see.
Information in that room that gets out of that room, so they're not as comfortable to give information while they're in there. To quote Chairman Leary at the time, you said, "We do a lot with a little." We've maintained that, things have not changed. In two thousand twenty, Litchfield Police Department staff, when the building became a top priority, was thirteen full-time officers, two permanent part-time officers working thirty-two hours per week, two, two, excuse me, two full-time police dispatchers, a police prosecutor working thirty hours per week, an administrative assistant working thirty hours per week, two part-time police officers, one animal control, for a total of twenty-one. So since nineteen ninety-seven, the full-time staff increased seventy-eight percent, and the building didn't change. The current staffing as of December two thousand twenty-four is twelve full-time officers, we're slotted for fourteen. We have one permanent part-time officer, but he has reduced his hours from thirty-two to twenty-four, two full-time dispatchers, a police prosecutor working thirty-plus hours per week, an administrative assistant, one part-time police officer, for a total of eighteen. So our staffing hasn't changed much since this became a top priority for the town and the C I P. We still have major safety concerns, there's easy access to the interior of our facility and civilian staff. The layout of our booking room, which was also noted during the walkthrough, it's a officer safety trap. So once we are in there, we are in a position that we have no exit from if a suspect decides to elevate the situation. There's improper ventilation for the evidence room, there's sensitive materials in there. There's improper ventilation for cleaning weapons, we work with carcinogens, and none of that stuff can be properly ventilated. The evidence room needs a standalone H V A system for preservation of evidence. It needs HEPA filtration system due to molds and toxic substances stored within the evidence. Again, the Sally Port. The space constraints still remain, the locker rooms are a, a, a major concern. We still hold the same amount of staff, so we are just about maxed out on lockers. And then we also have specialty divisions, so we need some storage for S O U. We need detectives' equipment, we need processing equipment, and we're just, on our side of the building, there is no storage, so we have turned the sergeant's office, which during the tour, there was basically desks in there, we have now added three armoires in there, plus four desks for just places to store some equipment. Again, the break room has remained multipurpose, nothing has changed there. We've tried to change some areas of the building to accommodate these tasks a little bit better. And we are happy to have members do another tour. We've, we've put that out there before, if anyone would like to take a walk through, anyone from the town or anywhere, we, we'd be happy to, to share our concerns in person. We have no conference or training room. At the moment, we utilize the fire department as much as possible, or the board of selectmen room. We don't have a room needed for operation plans or briefings or working with outside agencies or debriefings after critical incidents or anything like that. Again, that's all highly sensitive information that we don't want leaking out here. The prosecutor's office is doubling as a record storage office, as well as his office. He also meets with defense counsel there, meets with victims, juvenile offenders, their parents. He has two chairs in that office, and it's full of filing cabinets for storage. The honor guard equipment has been moved out of the shower into one of the armoires in the sergeant's office to, so that we, we were trying to go and try to alleviate some of the problems that we had. We don't have an impound lot, and with Warren pretty much exiting, there isn't one in town. So if we need to impound a vehicle and keep that vehicle safe and secure, we don't have anywhere that we can do it. We have the inability to seize and secure large vehicles and/or multiple vehicles for an investigation. We, we have had stolen vehicles as recently as two months ago. Again, police records are still stored off-site in the mold-infested basement of the old town hall. We also have no commercial-sized refrigerator or freezer for long-term storage of sensitive assault kits. And those are required to be stored forever per new legislation. We have no bulk storage, we have no storage for evidence supplies and P P E. This became a, a pretty big concern since COVID. Right now, all of that stuff is being stored in the, the Sally Port. So to keep in compliance with M R I's recommendations, we've tried to declutter some common areas. We've completely cleaned out the Sally Port, and it doesn't take long for that to, once it's clean, people to start putting stuff right back in it, and it becomes a storage area again. And then again, like I said, we've relocated the honor guard uniforms. So those are just some of the reasons that we're trying to obtain a new facility to keep up with the times and provide proper working areas for all.
So a suggestion to you maybe would be twofold. Number one would be to have a couple of open houses where the public can come in. Have them posted on the town, and any way they get the word out to the public, and just let them come see what your daily operational situation is. And the second is maybe get L C T V to do a tour. And you can take them through like you did with us a few years ago and show them everything. And like for the Sally Port, actually pull a car in there.
We can't. The car doesn't fit.
The Tahoe's don't fit at all.
So we can get the Tahoe in, the problem with the Tahoe, once we put a Tahoe in there, we can't close the door, it's too long of a vehicle. If, with, with anything in there.
So the people can see that.
And if we need to open the door, the doors don't open, it becomes another security concern for us.
Back in that day, the Ford used to fit in there, but with the towels.
Even the Fords.
Even the Fords were tough.
It was tight, I know it was.
You couldn't really open the doors.
There was no storage at the time where we first did it, and it fit, but.
Right now, it's not, a vehicle can't fit in there. We have tires in there, we have, we have a storage armoire in there, we have some evidence, some bulk evidence in there.
At the time it was built, it was what was needed, but it wasn't planned for the future.
Correct.
I would agree with you, Bob, that I was going to suggest the same thing, that have an open house a couple of times and have, allow people to come walk through and witness, experience what is really going on. I will definitely take you up and come take a tour, I have not seen it, but I, I know it's needed.
Put it on the town cable.
I think there's already a film.
There is a filming from the two thousand and nineteen walkthrough. And I believe that Mace is, I don't know if that's still.
If, if it's up there, we can dig it back up.
The, the video quality wasn't the best at the time, it's actually very, very dark. I'm not sure what it was taken with, but some of the footage is hard to even see.
Poor lighting in the building has caused that.
True.
In an effort to get as much information out as you can.
I think the tours would be the better part of the whole thing, if people want to really get.
We can do another tour.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to.
Happy to, I mean, we can get a camera come down and record the whole thing over again, and highlight the, because I was, two thousand nineteen to now, there are other deficiencies that were.
Correct.
There's L T D lights now, we can prove it on your head.
What you just read is beautiful, if you put that in a PowerPoint slide. Is that, I mean, how could you dispute the facts?
No, I think that's.
Some people look at that, they wouldn't look at a movie, but they might look at that.
Well, the original building was, I was on the committee, and it was a tight, it was a tough sell, even back then.
Oh, yeah?
And, because no one wanted to leave the old town hall, that was the issue back then, too, and the police department was in the bottom of the town hall.
Correct, yes.
Okay? And this building here, there was a foundation, a basement.
There was a basement, yeah.
But the problem is, back in the day, there was no water supply up here, and when you get into a building like this, a certain square foot, you got to put a sprinkler system in. And there was no water to do it. Okay? So that didn't happen. That would have saved a lot of storage, okay?
Probably would have solved a lot of the storage issues that we're faced with.
Okay. Because the attic is full, too. If I recall, on your side, it's got stuff stored up there.
Yes, there is stuff up there, yes.
It's still there, if I remember.
The mice like it.
So Article twelve and Article thirteen are your cruisers. One is from unassigned fund, which is no tax impact.
Yes.
New tax impact to the folks. And the other one is asking for the folks, the townspeople, to purchase one, so.
Yep, it's success.
Give us a quick picture of those.
So as, as we've spoken several times on the vehicles, and anyone who knows that, that drives up and down three A, we still currently have two vehicles sitting at Edwards, and the only reason we only have two there is just because we don't want to fill his lot with more, but I have more that need to go. I have another vehicle sitting in our parking lot with a check engine light on right now that has a major fault to it. So I have three vehicles, as we've spoken in previous meetings, our average vehicle has, I, I don't remember the exact number that Chief Jones.
Eighty-three thousand.
It was, it was over eighty thousand, and then he, he had a breakdown of if we do one vehicle, what, what it will look like. But we also have a frontline vehicle that we're currently operating with right now that has a hundred and thirty-six thousand miles on it. So our vehicles are very high in miles, which equates to high maintenance. And the other consideration that people need to look into is the average idle hours on these vehicles. So while the vehicles are running, even though they have a hundred thousand or eighty thousand, they are running, on average, sixteen hours a day per vehicle. So the mileage equates to more like three hundred plus thousand, wear and tear on the engine. And what we are seeing is catastrophic engine failures, we've had multiple engine rebuilds, and I believe we have one car out there that's going to need another one. If we don't try to control this, we're just gonna, we're putting our officer's safety at risk when they're responding. These calls aren't, they're not your daily drivers. Where we're going to the grocery store, these are being driven in emergency situations, which puts the public at risk and our officers at risk. So we, we really do need to address it, and it would be very nice to get back to what we've been trying to work on. Unfortunately, we, we keep getting hit with vehicles that we just can't seem to, it's like a curse on the police department. No matter which vehicle we try, we're, we're being faced with multiple equipment maintenance issues, our, our equipment, I mean, our vehicle maintenance budget this year is, it's, yeah, it's, it's not in good standing.
Well, hopefully, I mean, well, we have one in the budget, so, and, you know, hopefully you get both of them, but if, at least you get one of the warrant article ones, I mean, that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, we will be very hopeful to get.
And then stay with the one every year in the budget, and that'll help you out.
Which would be very, very helpful for us.
Stop buying one a year. If you cycle them out after five, just keep going.
We've got to try.
Well, the board needs to commit to do that, because this board has taken it out of the budget.
We did during COVID, yeah, we did.
We didn't put it back, and the same thing happened when I first got back home.
We tried to put it back, but it got yanked at the dentist office.
So we have to figure out how do we defend that, that condition and keep it there at all times.
I think we should keep it there, make it a point to keep it there.
And again, when we do the walkthrough, we're, we're happy to show you the conditions of the vehicles. We're happy to, if anyone wants to schedule for a ride-along and, and see the equipment that we have with them.
I don't, I sit at them all the time. Wiring harnesses are falling down, seats are broken, you can't see it.
This interior. Just a general question, it's not, I know today's cars, if you go, if you stop at a light or you stop, they shut off.
These, these are, these don't do that.
So, so, actually, if I could just correct you, some of them do. So our admin vehicles do, and it's actually a feature that is, like, highly undesirable for a police vehicle.
I concur.
Um, and unfortunately, we have actually spoken with Edwards about getting that shut off in the admin vehicles, and it is a setting that cannot be overridden, or that's what we're, we're told at the time, or it's very difficult to do. But yes, our, the police frontline vehicles don't have that feature.
Yeah, yeah, last thing you want is your cruiser not being able to start up.
You get a call, and you're going to hit it to go, and.
Right. You think your car's stalling out, right? It's a heart attack.
I just found out that the Williams back just, I didn't know I had it, I went to a stop sign, and things shut off.
Yeah.
I never had a vehicle do that to me.
Your, your car's the same car as the admin cars.
Okay.
So those, those do that, you, yeah. There's a switch to turn it off, but it just.
No, there's not, not on those.
Really?
Correct.
Even mine has one.
No, you cannot disable it.
It comes back on, it sets the car back up, and it drives me crazy, so.
Do we have any more questions for Captain?
And we, and we've asked.
I want to thank you.
No, thank, thank you for letting me speak here today.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Article one, we don't need, really need to discuss that, I don't think. The zoning stuff, we don't have to. Anybody have any questions on Article five, the operating budget? Comments, questions, aye?
It's still not the, the final, right? Because the Budget Committee hasn't actually approved it, so which means we're not ready to approve it yet.
Right, it's still, op-od's done.
Yeah.
It's just waiting to go through the other process.
Yeah. Okay, Article six, human services, health agencies. Everybody good on that? Article seven, ambulance revolving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Article eight, property revaluation?
Yeah.
That's always a four-one vote.
You have to do the evaluation.
I always present it.
It's by statute, isn't it?
Keep the same slide deck.
Well, I present it each year. They're both against it.
Somebody just wants it to go out to bid, that's all.
I know.
Article nine, police department building, we just had the captain here. Article ten, general assistance expendable trust. Questions, comments?
Pretty good with that.
Article eleven, Public Works Expendable Trust Fund. Everybody good on that?
Mm-hmm.
Article twelve, Cruiser, thirteen, a Cruiser. We just had the captain. Article fourteen, the cemetery trust fund.
That's a clean, too, right? Isn't that the, to fix the, the money taken and make sure it goes the right place? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. Yeah. For the folks at home, that's when people buy cemetery lots or plots. The money will go, they have to write the check to the town, but it's going to go into an expendable trust to help with the maintenance over there for the broken gravestones and sometimes the cleanup that they need.
Should have gone there all along.
Yep. Okay, Article fifteen, ratification of the lease agreement for the cell tower. That's pretty cut and dried.
Should be, yeah.
Should be. Oh, you just opened it up, John. Article sixteen, supplemental fire coverage?
Yep.
I'm all set with that. That's good. Okay, Article seventeen, assistant library hours?
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Why does it say April to December? Oh, my computer just shut down. I guess the power's not on it. Oh.
It's a summer thing.
It's only a summer program?
Basically.
No, I think it's.
It gets voted on in March, but they hope to start the position in April.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
But why are they ending it in December? That was, I don't know.
The end of fiscal year.
That's not fiscal year.
That's it? Okay. So what are they, they're not going to do this extra class between January and?
No, no. Next year was, would be the additional funds.
My screen went blank because I don't think this is really plugged in.
So it's saying for 2025, it'd be twenty-seven, one hundred and seventy-five.
So 2025 and then 26 is the other month.
Thirty-six, forty-seven.
Gotcha. Okay, so they prorated it a little bit.
Twenty-five and then 26 is.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
I just said, why are they doing those three months? Sorry. Okay.
Get them through eight months and then 2026 will be a full year.
Yep.
So do we, we need to, we're going to have to vote all these, right?
Eventually, yeah. Probably, is that next meeting? I don't.
Well, Kim's email that she had sent out with, she said, if you go with the forty K to the Recreation Trust Fund, it will use three hundred and three thousand, nine oh three from the unassigned fund balance in total. These need a vote Monday night.
Which one need a vote?
I think all of them. So, so what she's saying is all of these coming from fund balance?
Oh, the unassigned funds, yeah.
I think they're going to, I think they're going to Budget Committee on the sixteenth, right?
Oh, that's probably why.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, we can't vote on the, like, the, the ones that don't have the actual numbers, yeah. Right? Until we get the hard numbers on them. I mean, unassigned fund balance is easy, that's easy.
Yep, yep, yep.
Or, or the ones that we have.
I think they're really all easy.
If it's got a dollar amount attached to it, I think we can vote.
Yep.
Can I just finish up eighteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I just don't understand. Again, my machine.
Okay, yeah.
The last line on number eighteen?
I just plugged it back in for you.
Oh, you did? I didn't know it was unplugged. What is that recommended piece in the middle? Recommended? There was something in the middle like that, recommendation or something?
Oh, this, she's got two, two options. We're not sure what the request really was.
So this is number eighteen, right?
Yeah.
So does that last sentence says recommendation? I just wasn't sure what that meant.
So it would be the second one.
Recomend by Budget Committee.
If you notice, there's two Article eighteens.
Yeah, there's a hard copy here, yeah.
So the desire is to have the recreational expendable trust fund.
Mine just.
Yep.
I'll just take, as long as you're all right. I just thought it was by itself. Let me just make sure I kept writing it. She had the or. Got you. It's on the next page.
Or desire to have.
Eighteen.
We're hearing from our committee that it's fifty thousand they want to have back in that fund.
Yes, yes.
I guess I'm reading it. I'm sorry, it's number nineteen.
I think they need more.
I'm sorry, it's number nineteen, I meant to say.
Okay.
If you go to nineteen, that last sentence, you know, the one of the full sentence.
The eminent domain?
Yeah, it says recommendations required. I just, can somebody elaborate or if we can't in public? I just didn't know.
It's unassigned fund balance. We have to recommend it. Yep.
What did it say?
There's no tax impact, so it's not a Budget Committee thing.
But it said recommendations what?
Recommendations required. So that's our recommendation.
Our recommendations required, okay. It just, was just two words hanging there.
So the only concern I have is there's a lot coming from the unassigned fund balance and people giving a look at it like, why do we have so much money in unassigned fund balance?
Well, we have to have money in the fund. That's how the town operates. And we've actually increased the, which I'm very pleased.
Oh, yeah.
We've increased it, yeah, because we were so worried about it being in the lower percentile. But I think, Karen, where's our unassigned fund balance now? Is it around eleven percent?
I thought it was like ten and a half to eleven, yeah.
Yeah, with, with all these counted.
Not, not these ones that you'd vote on tonight, no.
So if we take, what'd you say, three?
That, that's with the 2024. That, that's not even with the, so that was with our last year. So it's not even with 2024 stuff.
I think she thinks that would go a lot.
We haven't had, you know, finished the year or had our audit done, so it's all on 2023's. And then, well, so I should say DRA does take into effect when they set our tax rate, all the 2024 warrant articles and, and stuff, so.
Okay.
DRA is different than an audit.
I thought we were at like nine percent, but then Kim had said that we had brought it up to eleven percent.
Yeah, let me look at the tax rate and I'll tell you what.
We just want to go through the ones we can vote on and vote on?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend Article six, human services and health agencies.
We've got to get up to where we are. So, so we're not going to vote on five yet.
No, because the Budget Committee's not done, right?
Correct. The Budget's like, don't do that. Well, we can, yeah, we can still vote on it. And then we have to, we would have to revote.
Yeah, but I thought we waited.
But we can vote to rec, you know, if we send it to them with our recommendation, then, I mean, we've done it in the past.
Okay.
I, I don't, whatever will the board is.
Because then if there's a change, you should be able to.
Yeah.
I would think.
We've always revoked it.
I'll strike that one. I'll make a motion that we.
Well, you can still do six first.
Article six, human services and health agencies. I make a recommendation, a motion to recommend.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Brunel for Article six.
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Lynch. Any discussion?
No, it's common sense.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion for Article six carries five zero zero.
Want to go to five now?
Article five, operating budget.
There we go.
I make a motion, we recommend.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel and a second for Mr. Gannon to recommend Article five, the town operating budget. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
Article seven, ambulance revolving fund. I make a motion to recommend.
I will second.
We have a motion for Mr. Brunel and a second for Mr. Gannon for recommending Article seven, ambulance revolving fund. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
So Bob, sorry, back to you, percentage.
Yep.
Eleven point two, um, three percent according to DRA for our fund balance retention.
And that's before we take out for these warrant articles.
Yes.
Yep. Would you have a guesstimate of where we'll be after this?
Well, they're saying our retained is three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine.
Okay, so we'd be about two point.
And you might have some drop this year. You don't know where we'll be at the end of this year either. I don't think there'll be much that will drop.
I think like that, in the case of like the hundred thousand for eminent domain, I think that the issue is that's coming from the drop from this year potentially, based on the targets, I believe is what she was talking about. It seems like we're in a good healthy spot.
Yes.
I just don't want to see us back down around the nine percent range where we were because there was that discussion last year. If the school had passed and we had the bond payment and the school payment come up, it would have put the town in the red. So I want to make, because we were, our balance wasn't that high.
It would be a first of ten, that's all.
Yeah, we don't, no, you don't want that.
Hopefully we don't.
I know tan is bad. So, okay.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article eight, which is.
Don't forget. No, we are at eight. I'm sorry.
Did we vote on seven?
Yeah, we just did. Five zero zero. We've done five, six, and seven.
Oh, I thought you asked for, um, anything to say. All right.
I make a motion to recommend.
Really? I thought we.
Article eight.
Yeah, we did.
Property revaluation, expendable trust fund. I'll second.
We have a motion on Article eight from Mr. Brunel and a second from Mr. Gannon. I almost flip-flopped you. Any further discussion? You guys know where I stand on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstained. Motion carries four one.
You know it's a requirement by RSA.
I know it's a requirement, but I still think it needs to go out to bid.
Well, I don't think.
We need to just see what's up there.
This has nothing to do with the bid part. This just has, to put the money aside.
Correct. We still go out to bid.
We can go out the bid after we get through this revaluation.
It's my soapbox and I'm standing on it.
Aye. You're consistent.
I am. I try to be.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the voters, Article nine, the new police station building.
I'll second. Go ahead, Kim.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel and a second from Ms. Queenan for Article nine, new police department building. Any discussion? No?
Drastically needed.
All those, uh, no discussion? Okay.
We've already been.
My only discussion will be that, considering everything that we discussed earlier, conditional on everything we've discussed.
It's part of our process anyway.
Yep, I know that. I know that.
Everything's subject to change.
I'm talking about large number and I want people.
Everything's subject to change before the end.
Yeah, we want the taxpayers to know that we're looking out for it as best we can, okay?
We know this is the first step.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I make a motion that we recommend to the voters, Article ten, general assistance expendable trust fund.
Estimated tax rate for 2020 was zero. I recommend it. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Brunel and a second from Mr. Lynch for Article ten, general assistance expendable trust.
I take the zeros.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article eleven, Public Works Expendable Trust Fund with a tax impact of zero.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel on Article eleven. I'll second it.
I just hoping you would like something.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We forced him.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I make a motion, we recommend to the voters, Article twelve, replacement of one police cruiser with a tax impact of zero.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel and a second from Mr. Lynch for Article twelve, replacement of one police cruiser to come from unassigned fund balance, tax impact rate zero. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
Go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion, we recommend Article thirteen, replacement of one police cruiser with a tax impact of six cents.
Motion for Mr. Brunel.
I'll second.
We have a second from Ms. Queenan.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here and then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero. Article fourteen, cemetery.
I recommend that we, with that deal.
We have a motion from Mr. Lynch to recommend Article fourteen, cemetery expendable trust.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Mr. Gannon. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
I'd probably skip fifteen until we actually can do it.
Oh, the lease agreement, you want to hold on that for now?
Yeah, I think, because we have to say everything. I think we got to wait for legal to finish.
Okay. Very good. Article sixteen.
I'll make a recommendation that we recommend Article sixteen, supplement fire coverage with a tax impact of four cents.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel.
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero. Article seventeen.
I recommend, we'll put this out to vote.
Well, I don't think we should because we don't know what the tax rate is. I think it's.
I think it's point oh oh two. I think it's rounding. It's on the wrong formula for the rounding.
Zero zero two.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, so it's going to round down to the point oh oh two.
So we have a motion for Mr. Lynch for Article seventeen.
Second.
Second from Mr. Brunel. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve Article eighteen, fifty thousand for the trust fund with a zero impact tax pa, with a zero cent tax impact.
We have a motion from Mr. Brunel for Article eighteen, recreation expendable trust fund to come from unassigned fund balance with tax impact of zero zero zero. We have a second from Mr. Lynch, a new rec member.
Which one is that? The, the one for forty thousand?
Yeah, forty thousand.
Thanks, Bob.
So this one's.
We do the Budget Committee. I need that.
It's not what Steve said the, the board was at. The commission was.
This is the second of the two options, correct.
Yep, yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
I'll just jump on that one.
So you'll scratch the first, Article eighteen. This is the second one, okay?
The forty thousand, yeah.
Question on this at the end. There's a legal still working on the building code amendment. What is that?
That's what it sounds like. I think it's the amendment that's needed to give the That's what it sounds like, I think it's the amendment that's needed to give the zoning, give this board of a selectmen, um, authority to review their findings, whatever.
In other words, in other words, if the guy comes, he's appealing to building code, that's what you're referring to, I don't think it's possible, cause it's the state code.
Yeah, that's what I wanted too, well, I, I assume our zoning ordinances though, not building code, but I think it's zoning.
If it's zoning ones, but it's not in the building code, you can't put the building code in the zoning, cause zoning is land use.
Yeah, I think it's zoning.
Yeah, it's a land use thing, you can't, you do that, that I, legally, I've been through that before.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's get, let's find out from that.
Yeah, it's nothing there, so we don't know what it is anyway, so.
Yeah, cause I've, I've, I know in, in all the years that I've done it, once the state adopted the code, cause before, back in the day, the towns adopted the codes, each town had different years and dates and stuff like that, but now it's a state code, and you can't.
Right, I think that's what this is.
Yeah.
You remove your local, most of your local, and it, yeah.
Local has to go.
Oh, you think that's the basic?
That's what I don't know, I think this might be it. There's also another one where it can go to, you can have an appeals now.
You can appeal a decision, but not on, but it's not through the town zoning. There's a building code appeal board at the state.
At the state level, yeah.
Yeah, but there was a new law that, um.
I'm not familiar with that one.
No, Laura Gandia went, and, uh, Kim, remember they went to that seminar like two months ago?
That's why I thought this was referred to.
And that was trying to, who could settle the dispute.
But this is probably trying, maybe it's probably trying to.
I'll pick on Laura tomorrow.
We'll find out when, when Kim gets back.
Kim took one and Laura took one, they're two different.
So. So, moving on, I will make a recommendation to accept article nineteen and to recommend it to establish a public Penachuk Water Works eminent domain expendable trust fund with a zeros, point zero zero tax rate impact monies to come from the unassigned fund.
I will second that, okay, I'll third it.
The only reason I did that was because I've been kinda in that from the start with Kim, we went to Hudson for that meeting and whatever.
I understand what you're talking about.
Actually. I understand. This one through. Do we have a second? Did somebody second? Did you second?
John.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so, second by Mr. Brunel, any further discussion? All right, here and then, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries five zero zero. And then there's an article twenty for petition, but we don't have any petitions yet, so, we could have one on signage.
Anything's possible.
Yep. So, that's, that's the end of that. That wasn't, that wasn't too painless.
Mm-mm.
That's true, right, so we get our budgets, uh, let's see. So, town administrator report, Karen, do you wanna do it?
Sure.
All right. Do you have it?
Yeah, all right, so, the, uh, November twenty twenty-four trustee of the trust fund, she had, um, attached their reconciliation for November. Kim is on vacation this week, December ninth through the thirteenth, and will have access to email and drive as needed. December newsletter issued, see below. Uh, the twenty twenty twenty, sorry, the twenty twenty-five town hall hours, which we already discussed, notice has been published on website, Facebook to boards, staff and transfer station sign. Her twenty twenty-five town academy notice has been published on website, Facebook to boards and staff. Letters of interest for the T A P grant for Pinecrest Sidewalk has been filed with the state, see below. On December third, twenty twenty-four, Penachuk East Utility Inc., Pitts Fields, Aqueduct Company and Penachuk Waterworks Inc., collectively, the joint petitioners filed and assented to request to extend the December third deadline for filing a settlement agreement to December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The commission grants the joint petitioners' request, see New Hampshire Admin, R P U C two oh two dot oh four. The party shall file any settlement agreement on or before December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. To allow the commission time to review the settlement agreement, the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four status conference is rescheduled to, to January second, twenty twenty-five, at one P M. And boards and commission meetings with the board of selectmen, see schedule below.
That was probably the quickest town administrator report I've ever sat.
She's watching you.
She's watching.
She is.
She is, she is.
She is.
She's on vacation.
I guarantee she is.
With an umbrella in it, too.
No umbrellas, just ice cubes.
She's motivating me to turn her access off.
We can turn it off, right?
I can.
Okay.
If you ask me to.
Up next. Up next, uh, we have selectmen reports, rec commission, uh, Mr. Gannon, also heritage commission.
Uh, rec, obviously, they have the Spuritz Field event on Saturday, plus the, uh, parade on Friday night. We attended, I, I know you're there as well, on Saturday was pretty good, there was a lot of people.
It was awesome.
Good night for it.
It was awesome.
Fireworks went well, everybody seemed to be having a really good time. Um, starting tomorrow, Kevin's responsible for the rec. And then the next heritage, I think, is next week, two weeks away.
Okay.
I'm gonna take that.
Very good. All right, up next, we have, uh, planning board with Mr. Lynch.
I did attend due to a family matter, so I couldn't go.
Okay. All right, uh, next, uh, Kim Queenen, capital improvement, uh, economic and, um, and all the other ones.
Uh, let's see. Our economic development committee, we will not meet until January twenty twenty-five, because the meetings fall on Christmas. So, that's, and it was Thanksgiving. Uh, Laura Gandia and Jay Menkar from N R P C are looking at potential zoning solutions for what we came up with during our meetings, when we invited the public in. Uh, we also, Kim Kleiner, um, had recommended, she had some third-party company that also can take our data, and they can also make some recommendations for us as well, so we'll work both sides of that. But again, we'll resume that in January. Capital improvement, planning, uh, we did meet Monday, December second. We did prioritize, the school, uh, attended, we had, um, Julie Darling, uh, yeah, from the business admin, and we also had Brian O'Connell, the superintendent there as well. Um, so, everything was prioritized and talked about, then, the town voted, we voted for the town side um, to approve what we came up with. Uh, we did not vote on the school side yet, because we wanted the superintendent to go back and have one more school board meeting with them before we came back. So, that's where we are with that, so the SIP has been approved for the town side, and we're waiting to hear about the school. But all the dates are lined up to go to the public hearings at the planning board, and then to come here. All right, N R P C, executive committee meets December eighteenth uh, in Nashville, thirty Temple Street, and then the next full commissioner meeting, M P O meeting is in February nineteenth. And that's all I have.
All right, up next, we have Mr. Brunel with the conservation and the emergency management and the energy.
So, nothing new on emergency management, I guess we're all lucky there. Uh, energy hasn't met for a while, I think they're gonna have a meeting sometime in February, cause there's always some activity happening with the contracts. Uh, and then conservation, we met last week, uh, lots of updates around the, uh, Durocher Farm property. They have, um, settled in on the subdivision, and they're getting ready to go to the planning board to seek their approval on that subdivision, or subdividing the lot, um, for the, uh, the previous owners. Lots of activity around, uh, Tellarico, uh, some discussion around the open deed space and that's still ongoing. Um, they've been working on the twenty twenty-five goals, they have a lot of goals for twenty twenty-five, so, uh, a lot of work ahead of them. And that, oh, the other thing would be is, uh, there's a, they're playing a winter fish derby.
Yeah.
I think that, I believe they settled on a date, I think it's February twenty-second, I believe.
On Darra.
On Darra, yeah.
Depending on ice.
Hopefully by February, it would be frozen over, but it's a hard one.
Last year, they tried it last year, and it never froze.
Never froze.
They're shooting for February twenty-second, I think that's, I think that's what.
That's almost, it's almost spring.
But, it was an interesting meeting, there was, um, a study that was done, um, on our first population and stuff. Uh, that, that, George Lavish had kinda shared with us that he found out about, so if you have any interest, we'll take a listen. That's it.
All right, and last, we have, uh, myself, budget committee and school facilities, uh, budget committee is in the, just started the school, um, going through the school budgets, um, their overall budget, when, when you include the money that was taken out for the, the land, um, that was purchased for the elementary school, um, which was reduced from last year's budget. But it's in, you know, going back to this budget, the school budget's actually up about two point three million dollars, I think it is, so two point two. Um, I was a little disappointed, we only reduced probably a hundred and about a thousand, maybe, yeah, not even two hundred thousand cuts the other night in budget committee.
I watched it.
A lot of it is, a lot of the big increase, like one point one million is the contracts. Teachers' contract and another contract, contractual items, which you really can't touch. But there's still a lot of money there, so we have to, we have to do a better job, I think. Um, of, of, of being sharp with our pencils, you know, like, they were with the town, and, you know, it is what it is, but we need to be just as sharp with the school, it's a much bigger budget, there's a lot more money there. Um, and just make sure you don't hurt the teachers and the kids, so, um, but I think, well, there'll probably be more cuts coming, I just don't, I, I don't know, um, where they'll be, but